Thank you very much for coming tonight for the Erie Town Candidate Forum. This will be the second time that Rotary has been a participant, and this year we're going to work with League of Women Voters. We're very glad that both of us together can help put this on. And I want you to know from the very beginning that neither one of us are partisan. Neither one of us of our organizations endorsed any of these people. We are here to act as a neutral party, to help conduct forums and other opportunities. So that's who we are. My name is Andy Carter, and I am with the Erie Rotary Club. And just to let you know that the League of Women Voters has helped to put on most everything else behind the scenes. So those of you who are involved in League of Women Voters, I want to ask you all to please stand. I want to recognize you because I appreciate your service and your help. Okay? So here we go.
Thank you.
I have several people from Rotary that are out here as well. I know Rosalie's out there. Carrie is right here. And so we are glad to be a part of serving this community to help our community be able to do some better than human things. And that's what we're about in Rotary. Let me get a few housekeeping issues to start off with. We do have bathrooms here. They're basically on the other side of this wall out in the hallway. So you just go right back down how you came in. You take the right, and you'll see them on your right-hand side. Emergency exits are right over here. We can go up through there if we have to. I hope we don't have to step out. The playground area is closed. Just it was already posted out there. I don't see any young children in here, but just wanted you to know that it is closed. The forum is being recorded. The forum will be recorded, and there will be a link available sometime tomorrow, maybe the next day at the latest. Just so I don't let you know, I will post it on Facebook. Candidates will then also have access to it, and they can share it as well. So do not record. In fact, part of what the request is, is that if you have a cellphone, which I would imagine most everybody here does, please mute it. Okay? We do not want that to interrupt our conversation today. You're not supposed to record at all, so we don't want any recordings. You're not supposed to use any of the recordings to be a political promotion or something else like that. So only the League of Women Voters will be doing the recording. Also, please refrain from clapping, grueling, or otherwise showing your approval or disapproval to any response. Please respect the candidates and honor the dignity of democracy. Disruptions will only delay this forum. There may be something that you really agree with or something you strongly disagree with. Please hold on to that. And if you need a conversation or a thank you or whatever, talk to the candidates afterwards. They will be available out in the hallway. Okay? All right, more about the 2024 election. Taken from the Erie Town's website, the town of Erie became a home rule municipality by a vote of the people in November 2023. After adopting the town charter, Erie will now be governed under the town council, town manager form of government. Under this form of government, the town council, one mayor, one mayor pro town, five councillors, serves as the legislative and governing body of the town. While the town manager administers the day-to-day operations of the town, the council is responsible for establishing town policies and goals and has the authority to adopt codes, ordinances, and resolutions as needed to conduct the business of the town. The Erie mayor will be elected by the vote by the voters for a four-year term. Voters will also be electing two council members from each of the three districts. We did post a map out in the hallway. If you need to double-check, you may afterwards take a look to see what district you are in. The individual with the highest number of votes in each district will be elected for four years. And then the individual with the second highest number of votes will be elected for two years. The format for tonight's forum will be as follows. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement. I will read an opening statement for one of the candidates who unfortunately was unable to attend because of family commitment. We will then begin with questions that have been submitted electronically online. Questions have been reviewed by volunteer screeners for clarity, and we have combined several similar questions into one question on that topic. We will try to ask the candidates as many questions as time permits. But please understand, we are unable to ask all the many questions submitted. We had over thirty questions submitted. At one point, we were looking pretty low, and then we had a lot. We organized them together, and so we're hoping to try to fairly represent you. Your question may not be asked tonight. And if it is not, if there's something that's very pressing, and you may want someone from your district, again, you can talk to them afterwards. Again, we're going to ask as many questions as possible. For most questions, each candidate will have up to one minute to answer. However, I may expand that. I may even shorten it. So we're going to actually have a few questions that are ninety seconds, and there will be a couple lightning rounds at thirty seconds. So we're trying to keep it interesting, keep you engaged, and keep it flowing. So with that, we'll now turn to the candidates and have them provide their opening statements. Also, just to let you know the process, the hope, I say the hope because there's a lot of little moving parts in this, is that every candidate will have the opportunity to speak first. And we're going to stay within the district. So each district that will be rotating. So we have like a picture of multiple rotating wheels going on up there, and that's what I'm hoping we can keep it that way. So that's the aim, not to give anyone who's sitting at the end a greater advantage because they no longer have, thinking, oh, I've heard all these answers. Here we don't. So we're going to try to work with everybody. Okay? All right, with that, I am going to be quiet. Andrew Moore, would you please give us a start?
All right, can everybody hear me? Okay. All right, excellent. Well, first, thank you for coming out to listen to us tonight. I'm Andrew Moore. I'm running for mayor, and I've been resident in Erie for twenty-six years with Giannis, my wife. We've raised our two children, Matthew and Megan, here. Serving our community is one of my passions, and it has always been. As I've been campaigning and knocking on doors and passing out flyers, I love the conversations and learning about issues that I didn't know existed, in addition to the ones that I did know existed. I mean, deeply qualified for this position as I served three terms as mayor from 2004 to 2010, when we did the rec center, the ball fields, we did the first funding for open space and trails. I also have the education. I have an executive MBA from CU Boulder. I have degrees in computer science and sociology. I'm currently the CIO for Colorado School of Mines, which means I am responsible for all the technology. I am an independent, and I'm looking forward to solving problems from the many views for the good of the venue. Thank you.
Welcome. I also would like to thank Boulder League of Women Voters, as well as the Erie Rotary Club, for putting us on. Having forums like this are extremely important for us to be able to connect with the public. So I'm looking forward to even more people coming in because it's such a great opportunity. My name is Justin Brooks. I'm currently serving as the mayor. I've been the mayor since 2022. I joined the council six months before as a trustee. My family and I have lived in Erie for fifteen years. We moved here on New Year's Day, 2009, for eighteen months. It was a rotation assignment. I'm in the aerospace and defense industry in my day job. I have a bachelor's in computer engineering. I have a master's in systems engineering. I went to an HBCU for my undergrad, and I went to Penn State for my graduate degree. I love this family. I love this community and my family, and I will focus on housing affordability for seniors and our workforce, keeping our business growth going as it has been, and keeping our sense of community in town here. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you, League of Women Voters, Rotary Club, and fellow Erie residents for this opportunity. My name is John Morel, and I'm running for Erie Town Council in District One. My wife Suzanne and I moved here twenty-three years ago, when Erie was just a diamond in the rough. Now it's one of the premier communities in the front range. I'm running for town council for my neighbors and community members who feel that they're not being heard, especially when it comes to growth, traffic, lack of infrastructure, crowded schools, and increasing water costs. I helped lead the opposition at the high-density project on 111 in Arapahoe from last February through the summer. This alerted me to the plans for the town growth and has become a concern of mine. That is why I am asking for your vote in November. Thank you.
So I got to check to make sure this works. Okay, thank you. Oh, I feel like a broken record, but I want to thank the Rotary Club, as well as the League of Women Voters for hosting this, as well as the Academy for being gracious hosts and letting us use their amazing. My name is Andrew Solish. I am a current council member, and I am seeking reelection for town council in District One. I was elected in April of 2022. Prior to that, I was a planning commissioner and a comprehensive amendments steering committee member. I am married to my wife Gabrielle and the doting father of our son Maxwell, as well as our housekeeper baby Koda. In my day job, I served as the head of customer operations and onboarding for a computer software company. During the past two and a half years as your council member, I strive to be your voice, asking the tough questions when others wouldn't. I've advocated for the fiscal responsibility of your hard-earned tax dollars and have taken actions that prioritize the management of town's growth. I humbly request your support once again and ask for the honor and privilege of representing the Boulder County residents in District One.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me this opportunity, and thank you for coming here and listening to us. My name is Anil Pescomelli, and I am running for town council from District One. We moved to Erie four years back, and we love Erie so much. All the open spaces, everything Erie has to offer, schools, open spaces. So I want to contribute to Erie, to its growth, sustainable growth. And my passions are also about affordable housing and clean energy. And when I say smart growth, I want everything we have now to be tomorrow also in terms of the budget we have and how we grow. We want to grow responsibly. And for that, I want to give my time and make it, all the things we have now, make them available for tomorrow. So please vote for me for District One. Thank you.
Dan, I'm going to cut you off. We have a candidate who did submit their introduction. He's in District One. So I'm going to provide his opening statement. The opening statement, this is from candidate Garcia, and he had to say this. Good evening. My name is Richard Garcia, candidate for District One. First of all, please accept my apologies for not being present tonight. My fifty years of service in the community has been working with families in a number of capacities, and I always say that family comes first. Tonight, my daughter, Representative Garcia, is being honored, and the schedules are the exact same time. The three most pressing issues facing our community. Number one, affordable housing. Affordable rental housing for many is not available. Practically everyone that I have spoken to who work in our town cannot afford to live here. Number two, oil and gas. My biggest concern is that we become energy efficient. Moving to clean energy is the road to get this done, as well as protecting the labor force that would be displaced if we transition to clean energy. Number three, maintain and expand our city services. As our town grows, so do the city services. I will support our general budget as it grows proportionally to our population and development growth. I will support city programs that will meet the needs of our residents, which are our needs. There we go. That was it. Please continue. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here, whether you're a Saints fan or a Broncos fan. This won't be as exciting. I'm Dan Hoback. I'm running for reelection in District Two. I'm a current council member. I moved to Erie over twenty-two years ago, when the population was less than ten thousand. Now, development put in motion over many, many years will push it over fifty thousand. Even higher estimates that include Erie Lake Gateway, a mixed-use residential commercial area along I-25. My vision for Erie is that it be a more than a suburban bedroom community. My vision is for vibrant mixed-use developments of dining, entertainment, and parks linked as much as possible by walkable or bikeable paths. Above all, the reason I am seeking reelection is that it's always been my belief, even in past town elections, that continuity and stability are vintags for strong economic growth and development. I believe that for leadership, as well as for town staff. We have amazing town staff, and Erie town government was voted one of the top places to work in all of Colorado, not just municipalities, but all places, including commercial. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So this is working. Good evening, and thank you to our gracious hosts here tonight, and thank you for all of you for coming. My name is Brian Bell. I was elected as board trustees in 2020, and I'm running for reelection in District Two. If reelected, I will be the longest-serving member of the town council, bringing valuable experience and historical perspective. I'm running for reelection because I believe Erie can do better. We need a balanced approach with financial discipline. During my first term, we navigated a pandemic without laying off staff, ending 2022 with a surplus. However, recently, I believe council has lost focus, and we must return to a policy of living within our means, ensuring that new projects are tied to new revenue. I have a proven track record of collaboration advocacy. I helped establish the Airport Advisory Board. I was the only council member present at a meeting that reestablished a relationship with Boulder County and our I-25 development, and I've been an advocate for moving the landfill entrance off County Road Five. I hope to receive your vote tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. I echo everybody's thanks, League of Women Voters and Erie Rotary for setting this up. My name is Dan Malloy. I'm running for council seat in District Two. I'm a single father of three children. I served in Maranese Green Beret, and I currently work as a project manager. Been in Erie for six years now, and it's where I wanted to make my home for my children because of the small-town feeling that it had and the amount of state aid that we have in this town. I think it's an honor to serve on a town government in an elected office, and it would be a privilege to do that for this, for the city. My priorities, if I get elected, are to ensure that our spending of our tax dollars is done in a judicious and efficient manner, providing services to our town that matter to the most people and have the most impact on our lives. That we support and expand events around our city, that everybody can come together and enjoy, and that we can also ensure that we don't waste any of the tax dollars that we receive. To that end, I'd like to see every road cloud, including the neighborhoods, an expansion of our Fourth of July ceremony, and elimination of several positions that are excessive.
Good evening, and thank you again for everyone for putting this together. My name is Ben Funtill. I'm running for one of the two seats for Erie Town Council, representing District Two. I've lived in Erie for six years with my wife, and I've had the privilege of serving as the chair of the Sustainability Advisory Board, Home Rule Charter Commissioner, and I'm currently a planning commissioner. Through my time here in these roles, I've seen the growth and I've seen the potential of this town. I'm passionate about making sure that we have harnesses potential in a way that affects all residents. I am a licensed mechanical engineer. My campaign is built on three priorities: responsible growth, multimodal transportation, and financial sustainability. Growing our tax base with the mix of residential and commercial will be essential for the long-term sustainability of our town. I believe in collaboration and open communication. Elected, I'll work to make sure that every voice in Erie is heard. Thank you.
Hello? Good evening. Thank you all who took the time to attend tonight. My name is Brian O'Connor, and I am one of the three candidates running for District Three. My wife and I purchased our first Erie home in 2001 after selling our condo in Gunbarrel that we wanted to live in Boulder, who simply could not afford the Boulder prices, so we headed east. We landed in Erie when the population was just over six thousand. There was so little here, Old Town, the airport, one of our favorite restaurants, the Parkway. No Walgreens, no rec center, just open space. In 2015, I started my first volunteer position with the town of Erie on the tree board. I continue to serve on that board, currently acting as chairman. In 2022, I was elected, along with eight other residents, to draft the Home Rule Charter. In 2023, the residents approved the first version. In 2017, I started a one-man home services business, and in most years, I'm in over two hundred homes, almost exclusively in Erie. Though I am familiar with the number of resident concerns in my district, I also have a sense of concerns around town. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emily Bear, and I am running for reelection in District Three. I was elected in 2022 with a clear mandate from voters to lead with compassion and connection and leave from my heart. And I am proud that I have been able to do that over the last two and a half years at all of the decision-making tables that I have been at. It is my goal to amplify the voices of residents and the lived experience and to approach every table in conversation with curiosity and recognizing that I always have a lot to learn. And I'm really looking forward to our conversation this evening, and thank you all for being here.
Okay, we will now move into the question. Oh, just want to let you know that the third member from District Three did not submit an introduction. We unfortunately could not be here. His name is Travis Pines. So those who are here in District Three, Mr. Pines could not be with us. All right, so with that, let's start to go to the questions. In the very first question, we will start with the mayor candidate, Justin Brooks. And here's our first question. This is a sixty-second question. This is a sixty-second question. Erie's growth is bringing with it growing traffic. How would you go about addressing residents' concern about traffic into and out of our town during peak travel times? Another concern I frequently saw was the speed that we would see in our neighborhoods. Okay, Justin Brooks, you have sixty seconds.
So growth is most certainly coming to this area. We're currently, we just passed thirty-nine thousand people two weeks ago, so we're growing really fast. And I too drive through the traffic. It's exacerbated when we are putting our tax dollars to work by making road improvements in some areas because it causes other areas to become showpoints. As we've designed roads, county line road being an example of one, we are making them in a fashion that has natural traffic calming, that has protected lanes for bikes, makes it safer for pedestrians, safer for our children. And as we add development, we do traffic reviews for every one of them, and we weigh whether the addition of that development will be an undue burden on the area. And so speed management is another area that is a great concern. We have a neighborhood speed management program that we have launched. It will, right now, we're launching. It's in development now. You'll begin to see it next year. So those are just a couple of ways that we are managing both traffic and speed.
Andrew?
This is one of the big concerns that I heard over and over again while I was out campaigning and talking with people. The way that I now look at this problem is that we've done a good job with the roads around the development, but we've done a poor job with the two-lane roads going inside and out of Erie, especially along Vista Ridge and going out to Highway Seven, Erie Parkway going out to 287, Erie Parkway going out to I-25. So my plan is that we get the planners together. We do not have a completed long-range transportation plan. That needs to get completed, and we need to bring the financial experts together so that we could figure out how to create the plan with the financing to actually widen the roads inside and out of Erie. I think this is one of the most critical pressing issues to Erie at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Solish, we will start with you.
So I live in Flatiron Meadows, and we had one of these situations occur. We, at one point, had Isabel that was closed. We had 119th that was closed, and 111 was about to be closed. And if it wasn't for an individual who was on council saying, hey, what are we going to do? And pretty much put the brakes on that project, we would have been stuck. The town has grown exponentially. From 2015 to 2020, we grew at forty percent. The town planned for fifteen percent. We are in a situation where the town's growth has gotten to a point where we have to plan for our future. We have to understand where we are now, where we've been, where we're going, and where we want to be. There is a transportation master plan that is currently in the works. There are speed management plans that are currently in works, but it is going to take a lot of capital, and it's going to take a lot of time. Sorry, there's going to be comms zones because this is an issue in town.
Yeah, I've walked like almost four thousand doors that I knocked during my campaign, and one of the issues that people brought up is like transportation in and out. So like Andrew mentioned, we need to expand all the ins and outs of our entries and exits of Erie into like multiple roads. Also, if we can stagger school tangents so that some of the school traffic can be, not be like a block hole, and also roundabouts wherever it's possible instead of stop signs. And another thing is like having those speed enforcers. I saw those in the neighborhoods, but people don't respect them many times. If we have a vehicle there along with the speed indicator, then we could see some differences. Thank you.
Can I make a remark to you? Yes.
Thank you. So yeah, traffic congestion growth in Erie is a major problem. We basically have two corridors that come into Erie from east-west, and they're Erie Parkway and Arapahoe Ridge. I live near Arapahoe Ridge. That's one of the reasons why I fought the high-density development at 111 in Arapahoe, because there is not sufficient infrastructure to handle the traffic and even the flooding in that area. So we oppose this, and with a small group, we were able to keep that from happening, although the comp plan does threaten it still. What I could recommend, and what I've asked as part of the comp plan, is that these corridors be marked as an area of special consideration so that no additional growth is built in these areas until the proper infrastructure is put in place. Thank you.
Candidate Bell?
Thank you. So this is one of the things we, former Mayor Moore, mentioned, the Transportation Mobility Plan. This is something we have to get updated. We just had an update to our comprehensive plan. And one of the things that happened at that 111th development, yes, we voted five to one. We said the infrastructure did not support that development there. And then in the comprehensive plan, we basically redefined the densities that allows that development to go there because it falls within our newly-defined densities. So we have to get on track with being consistent in our policy. The other thing I'll say that I've been a total advocate for is moving that landfill entrance off County Road Five. County Road Five is where we take our kids to school. It's how we get to King Supers. Many of you probably traveled that way here tonight. I have been for four years trying to get that off there. Finally, we got this last year, a commission to go take a look at that, and they'll be bringing recommendations to us. But that absolutely needs to happen. So thank you.
Candidate. Thank you. No, no, I'm sorry, candidate Morel. You'll go.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're good. You're good. That's all right. We're figuring this out. We're good.
We Dan's getting confused.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, Dan too. Just annoyed.
Same thing. When we look at the traffic and the speed occurring in area, we've had growth, but we haven't had infrastructure keeping up with it. We've also had a few poor decisions on where we're allowing growth to happen. So as a dad of three kids, one in middle school, one in high school, and one in elementary school, I'm already dealing with staggered start times, all of which are still in rush hour. And then we put an apartment complex right across from Erie High School, where the main road in and out of it is at the intersection going into the parking lot for Erie High School. One of the things that I'm going to bring to council is that experience of a father who lives here and deals with the traffic every day and seeing projects like that and saying, has anybody actually considered that that intersection can't handle that? And it's dangerous, tech children walking across it, teen drivers going in and out of it, and a full apartment block of people that have to commute in and out of Denver and other areas. Then we look at our roads, which I experience every morning driving to other St. Frank's schools, and we see massive traffic on 52 Erie Parkway, cutting through Alpine Primrose here in this neighborhood. That's a problem. We need to think further ahead.
Candidate.
Thank you. Just last night at the planning commission, we had a ninety-five percent draft review of the Transportation Mobility Plan. I was lucky enough to have to get to lead through all of that. So that will be hopefully coming to the council soon. And that provides a lot of guidance on how we can solve this traffic. One of the things that I'm looking forward to most is smart design of our roadways that focus on moving people and not just cars. I also want to focus on providing viable, keyword viable, alternative means of travel around town and making sure that our roads work. People who, getting people out of their cars and into other means of transportation improves driving conditions for everyone in the town. Thank you.
It can't help it. Now, yep, now you're right. We all look around and experience the traffic, experience the development, and we get upset at whoever's running the town, when the truth is, these were all planned out fifteen, twenty years ago.
When the truth is, these were all planned out fifteen, twenty years ago. And that's when we needed a traffic transportation master plan. And that's why I'm proud that the current council and current council staff is in the process of making the biggest, most significant transportation mobility plan this town has known. We need to address traffic calming, we need to address the speed. We need, and neighborhood mixed-use developments will help in that. Those are shown nationwide to slow traffic. You have more than just speed rates going through town, through town. Widening roads is not, simply widening roads is not the answer. It's much more complicated than that. Thank you.
And candidate Bear.
Thank you. I have the privilege of being assigned to a lot of transportation planning and committees and coalitions. So this is something that I spend a lot of time thinking about. The Transportation Mobility Plan is coming to council on Tuesday, and so if you guys want to tune in and get to see that with council for the first time, I'm really excited. I was asking about it during our last meeting when we talked about the comprehensive plan. And I asked if, you know, are we considering things more than just cars? Because part of that, our traffic problem, our traffic issues are getting people out of their cars and moving them in other multimodal ways. And I'm proud that this Transportation Mobility Plan is considering pedestrian and cycle safety. I also am super excited about the launch of the Erie Flex Ride coming next, early next year. That's something that we have worked so hard on, we've secured funding for. We just passed the service plan on the, a couple of weeks ago, and so that's another great way to reduce traffic in town.
So it's, it's, I travel all around town for the work that I do. There's a, I can't really think of an area that isn't a pinch point to get in, to get out of town. Around town, it's, you know, four lanes, and then all of a sudden you get, say down to Arapaho, and it pinches down to two lanes. We need to work with our neighboring partners to try to see if we can do something to widen roads to say basically allow commuters to get from here to Boulder. I would be in support of additional modes of transportation. I used to commute to work when my wife and I were out in San Francisco. I've had three jobs where I commuted by bike, but the job that I currently do, I can't just throw that hat on and let my tools around. And, you know, I have to drive. I can't take the bus. But I do, you know, would support other modes of transportation for those who can.
Okay, when, right before you answer, if you would just go ahead and say your name, because sometimes people in the back cannot see it, it also would help probably as we, with the video recording that is happening. And as well as this, the owl camera, as it moves, it would also help you as well. So candidate Professor Morelli, you're going to be the first one to answer. That's how we're going to try to rotate it so that the mayors are not always the first people, and they're not always the last. So I just am giving you a warning because you're first. Here's the question, and this will be ninety seconds, so you have a little more time on this one. With the adoption of Home Rule, what appears to be the greatest challenge our town faces? What are the greatest benefits? And what will be, what does the board or the mayor need to do to navigate a successful transition? Basically, what the adoption form, or what appears to be its greatest challenge our town faces? What are the greatest benefits? And what does the board or the mayor need to do to navigate a successful transition? Okay, candidate Professor Morelli, you are the first one.
My name is Anil Professor Morelli, I'm representing District One. So adoption of Home Rule, I think, is one of the best things that has happened to Erie or any small municipal area. We get to decide what we want to do with things that are very local to the town and not depend on the state or other government bodies. So one of the things that I could see as a benefit is the election process itself, that we divided districts. And we have, you know, people representing the district who are very closer to the district and the population and their needs. And the challenges I could see is like coming up with solutions for immediate problems. For example, any revenue that needs to be generated, it's identifying those would be a challenge. And I feel like how as a team or as a council, what we can do is, you know, collectively see, because when we see this kind of growth, we see a lot of challenges coming in. And those challenges are, have different sorts of solutions. And I think with the mayors and the council getting involved to sort those challenges in a better way. Thank you.
And Morelli.
Hi, John, I'm Jim Morello, Home District. I would say that the benefits, that the three different districts is definitely a benefit. It balances the voting and the population so that everybody's equally represented. There's also challenges in that. There will be more representation from Welp County than Boulder County, but there's also more population in Welp County than Boulder County. So I think that's one of the benefits. You know, the budgets and the finances also give the town more control over their budget and finances, and that'll be a strong benefit. You know, and then one of the challenges will be around, you know, Erie already has the challenge of the two very different counties. And working together across those counties is going to be very important. I think the Home Rule actually will help there and hopefully bring the teams together. We have a lot more in common than we have in difference, and we really need to build those relationships. And that's something that I've always been really strong at, and something that in my career has helped me to be very successful. So, thank you.
Andrew Sawish, Council District One. So I was asked this question many times out campaigning. How has Home Rule affected the town? And my remark is, not a lot. I was fortunate enough to be able to sit in every one of those Home Rule Charter Commission meetings as a resident and listening to what they had to say, and the thought process they went through was amazing. It was truly democracy at its finest. It was basically the grassroots of what do we want to be? But again, I say not a lot because they did a less is more. There's two individuals up here, one of them was the vice chair. Both of these individuals were great in what they were providing to the commission. But again, they all said less is more. So what has changed? We're a council, we're no longer board trustees, we're a district, no longer townwide. We updated our ordinance to say that we're a council instead of trustees. We had the town clerk now under the town manager. We have the town prosecutor now under the town council. But not a lot has changed. Individuals would say, okay, well, what about, you know, marijuana taxes? What about these kinds of things? Well, a lot of those, we could already do as a statutory municipality. There was no change. It's what we can do potentially in the future. So this is something basically in our back pocket where if the need arises, we can do something about it. But in terms of what has been the benefits, what have been the challenges, there haven't been many because we haven't used it to its full efficiency yet.
Candidate Malloy.
Breaking the law. Dan Malloy for District Two. I think one of the essential things about Home Rule that we need to keep in mind.
I'm sorry, you were correct. I, did I skip you? No, I didn't. Okay, I am, now I'm skipping. I was afraid this might happen. It was inevitable. You said I was breaking the law, and I was like, did I skip? And I was, okay, I am so sorry, you may start over on your time.
Of course, we put time back on the clock.
Yeah, we'll put time, back on the clock. I have completely brought this one up, so, okay.
You're okay. I have a lot on stage in life. I think we all do. So Dan Malloy running for District Two. The transition to Home Rule, one of the key things that we need to remember with this is, as Andrew just said, it shouldn't be a huge change for us. So the key to this is not letting it go to our council's head, not letting us decide that we're going to spend more, continue to expand our government, continue to increase the taxes, and therefore you're going to drive businesses away or make it unaffordable for people to move into our district. Need to make sure that as we transition into Home Rule, it's mainly a title change and that it's not a massive expansion of what the town does. To that end, we need to make sure that everybody on the council and in the membership is a resident here that really understands what's going on in the community and can look at the project and the proposals and the services being offered and attempted to expand and say, that actually does make sense or does not make sense to my life. One great example of this is, as I brought up before, plowing our neighborhoods. We primarily live in neighborhoods as opposed to on the lane roads. But the lane roads get plowed within a few hours of snowball. But our neighborhoods don't get plowed for another day or two. So when we look at traffic and we look at the snowball issue, we have people not living and not working here in Erie, they're commuting out as we see from the traffic we just discussed. We need to make sure people can get out of their neighborhoods and get to work. And the answer to that is more plows, not RTE, not expanding alternative modes of transportation. It's making sure people can get themselves to where they need to be. I couldn't do anything on a bus to make sure I picked up all three of my kids at three different schools at three different times. Thank you very much.
Ben Hemphill, District Two. I am quite biased for the Home Rule Charter. Brian and I were one of the commissioners who wrote that. One of the greatest benefits that this charter provides us is now we have November elections. We don't have to deal with our April elections. So that's the major thing that we see here. One of the challenges that we have in this is the responsibility that the town has. We don't fall back on state statute on, or anything. We're allowed to make our own rules, so making sure that we're responsible with these extra powers. The districts that we talked about, that was discussed for months. We had six months to write it, and it took us four months to decide on it. They weren't the perfect solution, but it was a solution that made sense that we thought for Erie and that the residents ultimately voted on. So having this pool in our belt will provide expanding services that makes sense for the town. There's an option for collecting our own taxes, which helps ultimately save the town money by not, by tax revenue, not going to Denver and then coming back back to us. So the transition to Home Rule has already happened, and I'm very happy that I had the opportunity to be a part of that in that election.
And then, okay.
I agree that transitioning to Home Rule was not a sign of shift. The town council know more powers than the board of trustees had. We don't have taxation powers. What it did do, I agree that one of the biggest benefits has been the coordinated elections in November. It was a lot of work for the town staff, a lot of expense to the town to run a separate election in April. So that's a big benefit. I also, we have a number of advisory boards, planning commission, open space trails, sustainability, historic advisory board, free board, and the Home Rule Charter codifies the existence of the Open Space Trails Advisory Board, codifying our commitment to open space. And I think that's really important. Biggest challenge is really probably communication, helping everyone understand what the districts mean. And as more and more residents come into town, helping them understand and being ready to redistrict when populations shift. And so I think that's probably one of the biggest challenges. Thank you.
And candidate Bell.
Brandon Bell, candidate for District Two. So, yeah, I think one of the greatest strengths was the fact that we were able to have these districts. And I'm glad in my district, District Two's the only one that comes to Boulder and Welp County. Kind of fitting on a run of that because I'm a longtime Colorado, I'm not native, but I've spent fifty of my fifty-three years of life on planet Earth in Colorado. I spent most of that in Boulder County and currently living in Welp County. But I think it's good that certain areas have advocacy for areas for issues that affect them. And I know folks, I don't know if there's anyone from Morgan Hill, I know you're a newer community. I know there's a lot of issues going on there, and it's good to hear from that, and it's good to know that there's somebody that's advocating for you in that. So certainly I agree with that. The other thing I'd say is that, first off, we wrote a great charter. J.C. Moore, one of my longtime friends, he's an old Brewfield City Council member, and he's currently living in Erie. He wrote the Brewfield Charter, and so he was very complimentary to how our charter was written. And so that just goes to show that we've got all the right things in there. I also want to say that the biggest struggle that we're going to have is what we've seen with kind of the states kind of pushing these mandates on us. The most powerful power that we have here is on land use authority, and the state has really tried to take that over. So I think we need to ensure that we advocate for that, maintain control.
Candidate O'Connor.
Thank you. Brian O'Connor, District Three. Like Ben said, two of us have an unfair advantage in that we wrote the charter along with our fellow residents that were elected. The couple of the other benefits that weren't mentioned is the vacancy process. We laid that process out instead of allowing the trustees at the time to make the decision on replacement candidates for those vacancies that, when they occur, it would, you never knew how a candidate is going to be selected to be seated in that vacant position. The other was that new taxes still have to go in front of the voters. Council can't just make like a tax and say, which is in the tax. It has to go to the voters on the ballot, and they have to approve it or not approve it. Other items that were mentioned were that we can self-collect tax, but the challenge comes that we would have to staff up for that. So do we save money that's to be seen? It would increase, it would reduce the timing that we would receive our taxes. Districts versus at large, I think there is, you get a much more personal connection to your, the residents that you are representing. But the problem or the challenge with that is you have to redistrict following ten-year census. So it's going to be lopsided on some of the districts approaching that census mark. Thank you.
Emily Bear, District Three. Yeah, great job, you guys on the turn. Thanks. I think that one of the benefits that I haven't heard mentioned, I was just talking with staff, I think last week about the Neighborhood Speed Minimization Plan and how going Home Rule has enabled the town to really take a look at corridors and particularly around schools, and to be able to reduce speeds in the areas that would increase safety. And they were just mentioning to me that it was because we went Home Rule that we're able to make those changes that we need because speed limits are set by the state. So that is one huge benefit that we can see almost immediately in our community. I think the challenge that comes with going Home Rule is with more opportunity, we'll just need to be prepared for that. So whether it's collecting taxes, do we need to staff up? Do we need to hire a contractor to do that, to contract someone to do that for us? And so just being aware, but I do believe we can do hard things. And so I think that we can meet the challenge, and I think that going Home Rule has been a really great opportunity for the town.
Thank you. And more.
Enter Moore, running for mayor. This is a topic that I think most of us agree on, so I'm not going to go into great detail. You've already heard it. I will point out three things. November elections, that's a big positive. Districting, as we've heard, gets representation across the entire town. One that has not come up is that the mayor's term changes from two years to four years. I'm a three-term, two, three-term, two-year mayor, so I have to run three different times. And I think that's difficult. Having a four-year run will make it, I think, easier to get a vision and to pursue that vision. The last thing I'll say is that for a successful transition, I think we all have to be open. Open for changes in the charter, looking at views across the spectrum. And then when we have changes to the charter, being confident that we can bring those to the voters to approve those changes. Thank you.
And then Brooks.
Thank you, Justin.
Justin Brooks, running for reelection for mayor. The charter, the charter is a tool, as I said earlier, so I'm not hoping to repeat that. It's a natural progression when a town is formed in the state, they get a statutory charter that comes from the state. It only took us a hundred and fifty years to go to home rule, so we got there as quick as we could. I think it's, it's also important to know it's a living document. It can be changed by ballot mayor. They're changed all the time, all across the state. We want to bring choices closer to the voters. We want voters to be able to speak for the things that are most pertinent to them. The things that happen at the state capitol are things that have to be agreed upon across the entire state. What works for buyers, what works for Grand Junction, may not necessarily work for Erie. And so what home rule does is it gives you that option to customize your charter to things that, that matter most to you local. It gives you that flexibility. Blending the counties with districts, it is a way for us to get away from this Boulder County versus Weld County artificial line. They're really not that different. Weld County is actually a home rule county, Boulder County is a statutory county, if you didn't know that. Coordinated elections are extremely important. Before this, there was no campaign contribution limit in Erie, if you didn't know that. And so thanks to our House District Representative, that is going to be a new rule. And thanks to our Home Rule Commissioners, Tabor is a permanent thing in Erie. If Tabor were to be appealed at the state level, it will always be a part of our constitution and it will have to require that.
Okay, moving to our third question, this will be a thirty-second question. Candidate Hemphill, you will be the first one to respond, okay? All right, here's the question. How can Erie keep its unique qualities and small-town charm while continuing to grow? Thirty seconds, how can Erie keep its unique qualities and small-town charm while continuing to grow? Thirty seconds. Ben Hemphill, District Two. Keeping the small-town charm was part of the focus of the new comprehensive plan. One of the ways to do that and the thing I'm most excited about is the mixed-use developments. While increasing other modes of travel will help people meet their neighbors and meet people out and about wherever they want to be. The mixed use, the new neighborhoods for our new residents in Erie will provide places for old residents and everyone to hang out and meet up. Thank you. Okay, and then the whole one.
Thank you. Dan Hovak, District Two. I agree with that the neighborhood or the mixed-use development is going to be critical to maintaining any sort of, any charm. We need to move, sort of move away from simply having single-family homes out to the horizon and attract as many businesses as we can, small businesses. And make the town very walkable and bikeable. Thank you.
Brandon Bell, District Two. So one of the things that in that comprehensive plan that we had was there was, there was an increase in density. So we had in our defined zoning things. Once those get adopted, they move to our UDC where the actual code is approved. We need to make sure as we're going through our UDC updates that we have something that is in compliance to, to making sure that the densities fit where they're needed. We don't want to have densities where they don't work. And, and I think that ultimately is really what's gonna help maintain that feel.
Yes. Daniel Lee, District Two. To keep Erie's unique qualities and charms, I think we need to focus on two main things. One, building a sense of community. And two, we're continuing to build a sense of community. And two, keeping our town safe. I let my kids walk down the hill from up in our neighborhood down to Sweet's Ice Cream because it's safe enough. As we continue to increase density, that starts to go away. When last year and the year before, kids were walking back from the hill looking over downtown in the community center going, was that the finale? At the end of our fireworks show, starts to make you question whether or not they're going to have that sense of community or go to a different town. And that's something that we need to work on.
All right, Kennedy Bear.
Thank you. Emily Bear, District Three. As I was thinking about this question over the last two, two minutes and thirty-seven seconds. I was thinking of all these different things and really what it comes down to is planning. We have to be so smart and strategic in our planning and we can see that in the comprehensive plan. Density and diversity of housing is important just to support our small businesses who are absolutely the foundation of our small-town charm. And also connectivity, making sure that our neighborhoods are connected through trails and other ones.
Brian O'Connor, District Three. This one's a tough one, as we've heard, I was thinking about it today. How do you maintain small-town feel or uniqueness when we're planned to grow up to eighty thousand? It's a tough one. One thing that came to mind was preserving Old Town as much as possible and that feel of that Old Town center, somewhat center of Erie. And not putting, say, high-density units in that area. Or doing things like putting vehicle roadways coming down from Colliers Hill, which that plan was. So anyway, thanks.
Kennedy Brooks.
So small-town feel and charm comes down to people first. Focused on a sense of community, getting people outdoors, getting them to social functions, encouraging them to engage with their neighbors, get to know one another, be curious about one another. And really, was the rapid fire question? And really, really enjoy the amenities that we have. Mixed-use development enables you to get to more of a five-minute cities type of a concept. So for those who live in denser development, they can walk to the services that they need and we can blend the businesses closer to the residential.
Andrew Moore, running for mayor. This is probably one of the biggest differentiators between Mayor Brooks and myself. When Mayor Brooks led the effort to pass the new comprehensive plan with only four votes and densities were increased by over fifty percent. What that means is apartment complexes throughout Erie. That means more traffic, that means the loss of, of the charm that we have. We need to focus on trails and open space and we need to rethink those densities and roll them back. Thank you.
District One. I just lost track of it. Yes, we're at Marcella.
John Moore Laurel, District One. I agree with Andrew Moore about this. And, you know, the densities threaten our small-town feeling atmosphere. Infrastructure first is another key thing. This is the top priority for me. Location and community engagement. Community engagement should be a top item as we navigate through here. It's going to be a very difficult four years as we go through our comprehensive plan and go through the planned areas. We need to work together to make sure that we keep our small-town charm. Thank you.
So one of the best ways to maintain our small-town charm is by managing air growth. Specifically in, say, the Old Town area, that is the embodiment of this Old Town charm. It is, there are initiatives trying to move forward to put that into a historic Old Town area. It's one of the reasons why I was against the Cheeseman property that council majority approved because it doesn't fit there. The seventy-two to eighty thousand growth in the comprehensive plan passed by the council majority, it's not going to be a small-town feel anymore. It's going to be a large suburbia. So it is about where do we want to go with our vision?
I agree with most of them because I'm the last person. So one thing is, the only thing that is left with the Old Town, like a small-town charm is the Old Town. And everything else looks like a very sophisticated million-dollar homes and we start calling them like small-town charm. I think Mayor Brooks has the right thing where he says, people are the thing. More connection, talking to each other, having more events, that's the small-town. And the act space, if we can preserve that and add no agriculture around that.
All right, our next couple of questions will be one minute, just to let you know. We will start with District Three, I believe it's candidate O'Connor. You will be the first one to answer this question. Many residents have felt negatively impacted by oil and gas operations on Erie and for others, it continues to be a concern. What is your view on oil and gas operations in Erie?
The, I support town staff and enforcing or, well. As much as they, as much as they can overseeing and or enforcing the operations that are within the time limit. And the ones that are outside of the time limit over, doing their best to oversee that those, that those operations are meeting the state guidelines. That they are monitoring them and if they're not meeting the state guidelines to move forward or trying to have the state enforce those, those regulations. And. That's about it for me. Thanks.
Emily Bear, District Three. I advocated at the state legislature for the passage of Senate Bill one-eighty-one, which changed the state regulations from prioritizing oil and gas development to prioritizing health and safety first. And so I then plugged in at the town level and helped the town apply those newfound local authority to our Chapter Twelve in our UDC. And we included some very stringent rules that I believe that every application that comes should be held to those stringent rules. I think it's very important to elect representatives to this council that are plugged in and understand what's going on. As we're seeing the cumulative impacts rulemaking, some of those important regulations that the town has stood on in order to deny neighborhood fracking since the passage of Senate Bill one-eighty-one are trying to be reversed. And so it's important that we continue to advocate for our community at state regulatory tables.
Okay, candidate mayor, our candidate mayor Moore, would you please answer my question?
Andrew Moore, running for mayor. I think Councilor Bear said it well. Senate Bill one-eighty-one changed the game with an increase in setbacks to two thousand feet. It is highly unlikely that any new oil and gas drilling operations will come to Erie, simply because that setback is so large that the, the places where they could drill now do not exist. I also don't believe that oil and gas drilling has a place by our schools, by our houses. And so I'm in full support of that Senate bill.
Justin Brooks, candidate for mayor for reelection. I would think the chief information officer would actually share factual information. So it's unfortunate that he notices that the comp plan does not rezone anything, sets plans for things that are unentitled. It's not going to change a subdivision to a, a high-density residential. The stark difference between us is actually he approved more than sixty wells that are in neighborhoods today. And I think that he's been ignoring fracking ever since. I think my first act while I was on council was to actually pass a local UDC update, which was to increase the setback for residential development. So you cannot get a building permit closer to oil and gas developments, which is often attempted by developers. Senate Bill one-eighty-one does part of that, but there's still a lot more work that we have to do. There are plug-in abandoned wells that are leaking in our, in our neighborhoods. As a home rule municipality, we are actively looking for ways to increase the penalties on oil and gas operators who are not cleaning up their mess in a timely fashion.
And then it's so much.
Oh man. So I was on the planning commission when we passed our UDC Chapter Twelve, as well as UDC Chapter Six, Section Twelve. So it's the regulations of oil and gas operations as well as development and design standards related to oil and gas facilities. This was after SB one-eighty-one was passed and basically the town took the stance of, we're going to have the most stringent plow to us by the state day. What has that meant? Well, we don't have many oil and gas operators coming to the town to open up shop. What do they do? They go into Weld County and that's where all the operations go. On the council, we rely on an individual, our Director of Environmental Services, David Briggs. He is the one who is on top of things, advocating for the town, talking with us, executive sessions during public meetings. We really lean on him. What I do see as the future, just like Mayor Brooks said, is the plug and abandon wells. We have countless wells that are currently being plugged and abandoned and happen, especially with the Draco proposed pad.
Yeah, I think I've canvassed and knocked like four thousand doors. And I've heard this from many people, they're concerned about, you know, fracking and the amount of water that is being used and also the Draco pad. The drilling that goes under our houses and it might cause earthquakes. There's so much of misinformation as well as concern and safety issues. What we have with SB one-eighty-one is a, is a start. It sets up everything and all the setbacks and like Mayor Brooks said, we need to enforce things and clear these confusions. And at, at a high level, bringing in fight at the state because this is not over yet, it's just the start. Like, Councilor South said, we could, they just go out of the town and start building or run their operations from there. So, yeah, it's not then, it's, it's a start.
John Moore Laurel, District One. So let's start with, you know, health and safety of our community is number one. I have family members who have health issues when their quality is an issue. And, and this is, you know, I watched them go through this and it's very hard to, it's hard to watch and hard to help in those situations. So, that said, Erie, as they mentioned, Erie has some of the toughest regulations around drilling. But there's still many active capped and abandoned wells and those are the concerns. How do we better communicate when, when those wells are being capped? There was one recently capped near Rappaport Ridge, they put a bunch of hay bales up. We didn't get notification because we weren't close enough to it and we're not far, we're less than a quarter of a mile away. So we didn't get notification, we didn't get a timeline, nobody even close got a timeline of what activity was going to happen and how that was being managed. So those are the areas that, that we need to work on. Thank you.
Kennedy O'Connor.
Dan Hovak, District, Dan Hovak, District Two. Senate Bill one-eighty-one and the town ordinances that they changed to the UDC were, were great strides that have helped, but we can't let it harden. I supported the town speaking out against the Coyote Trails expansion, which is on the southeast corner of the landfill, a very large oil pad that they wanted to make even bigger. I support speaking out against the Draco pad on the other corner, further north, north of the landfill. Unfortunately, the town of Erie has been denied status for that, so we can't speak as a town. But you show up at the middle school at the end of the month and see how many people are really concerned about oil and gas anywhere near Erie, that's going to be a pact. We need, I was one of the counselors that voted against a building, a housing development on a very unhealthy, toxic land called Red Tail Ranch across the landfill. I support going full use with our third cameras as well. Thank you.
Kennedy Bell.
Brandon Bell, District Two. So first off, having both my parents die of cancer, I'm certainly paramount, paramount importance to the health and safety of residents. I don't want to see anyone have to go through that. I was on the board during our passage of our Chapter Twelve and Chapter Six UDC update. So one thing that wasn't mentioned with that is you can't even apply for a drilling permit unless the zoning has been changed to heavy industrial. Which right now, there are no heavy industrial zones in Erie. The other thing that you heard, Coyote Trails, you heard Draco, you heard these things. It's a matter of jurisdiction, even though SB one-eighty-one gives us great leeway, if it's not annexed into the town, we can't, we don't have jurisdictional control. I was the sole member of council that asked to have the Hammer property, which already had wells drilled on there that are going to be there for twenty-five years and can affect the future residents. I was the only one that stood up and said, we need to annex that into the town so that we can apply our laws to that. Thanks.
And then Dan.
Yes. Dan Malloy, running for District Two. When we look at oil and gas in Erie and the amount of time and resources that we spend talking about it and debating it and going over Musia, when we already have state regulations, we already have zoning in place that handles this. And when we look at the Draco pad requirements, it's enough leeway to found a law farm and keep it running for a few years. We need to stop wasting our resources chasing it on tail and stop wasting the council's time dealing with issues that are already dealt with in the state and in our zoning that we've already set up and focus more on issues that actually impact people every day. Making sure our trails are safe enough for our kids to walk down on so that they can go to downtown Erie and keep that small town feel. We also need to look at how we're going to engage with industry and engage with partners in the economic development zones that we can continue to have businesses in Erie as opposed to just driving two businesses. And a council that understands and a mayor that understands the chief information officer is a technology position and not a public relations role probably can help us get there.
Ben Hertel, District Two. Uh, as everyone has said, the, the state manages the, the oil and gas regulations. I want to be an advocate for the town and all the residents of the town. Air quality doesn't care about town boundaries. So making sure that we're working with our state regulators, our county commissioners and working with those groups to make sure that the health of Erie residents is taken into account with the, the drilling that occurs and the cleanup that happens. And doing what we can with our home rule powers to hold these drilling companies accountable for polluting and making sure that they clean up in a safe and quickly.
And then Mayor.
I started. Yeah. I can talk about oil and gas for a long time.
You're right. You're right. Okay, here we go. All right. So now we're on to our next question and this will be the mayor's. We'll start it and I believe we're on Mayor Brooks to start. This is about mill levies. In reviewing our taxes to comparable Lafayette and Loveland houses, we pay 949 to $1,361 more. I will say this has not been fact checked, but this is where the question's coming in, that we do pay more. The city could have reduced the mill levy to bring the 26.9% increase to a reasonable actual tax. By comparison, Boulder County lowered every mill levy resulting in a much lower increase. Why did Erie decide to retain the same mill levy, knowing that this would increase our taxes far beyond an increase for inflation? Would you commit to holding future increases to a reasonable amount by adjusting mill levies annually? There were a lot of questions about mill levies and taxes. This would seem a little more detailed. That's the reason why it's presented to you right now.
Before I pick the microphone up, how much time do I have?
You have one minute.
This is actually one of my favorite things to talk about lately, especially the gathering and then it being repeated. Uh, I'll clarify a couple of things. Um, there are, there are 16 or so different taxing districts in Erie. Uh, Erie is just one of them. Uh, we, this council, the current sitting council has lowered your mill levy twice. And so we have actually cut it twice. Uh, go check our website. You have 13808 or somewhere around there now. If you compare us to like the school district, which I think you should support, they're more around 50. Uh, if you have a metro district, the metro district are typically 50 to 80 is their mill levy. They're much higher. The reason our mill levy, our tax, our tax bill is higher, not the mill levy, is that our assessed values have been shooting up. So our property values have been climbing faster than some of our neighboring towns. And so that's why your tax bill is increasing. Uh, to combat that, we have partnered with other taxing districts to encourage them to also reduce their mill levies somehow. We've also worked with the state, there's a state commission that was assembled and they had a special session where they actually passed some ways to lower your assessed value, which is at the state level. So that when it's multiplied by the mill levy, you'll get more taxes.
And then Moore.
Andrew Moore, running for mayor. When you say that you lowered your mill levy twice and we lowered your taxes, but you don't take into account how much the taxes went up because of the value of your home went up doubled, you really aren't getting a tax increase or a decrease. You're basically getting a high tax increase and then we took a little bit off. I think keeping taxes flat and, and normalizing the mill levies so that you don't have these huge spikes in your property taxes is a big deal and it needs to be looked at. And we as leaders, uh, need to have that as a focus. I'm a fiscal conservative. I have been since I was a little boy. I look at money. I understand how it works and this will definitely be a part of, of my leadership if I get the opportunity to lead again.
Okay.
And since I have 15 seconds left, um, that's okay. I'll give up my time.
All right. We are in District One with candidate Harris Isamali. Peser Amali, I'm sorry, sir.
My name is Anil Peseramili and taxes is a, a question like all over, everywhere. Property taxes. The homes have appreciated here so much twice, three times, that the taxes are increasing and the mill levies, even if you adjust them, it, it, it is a, it is a burden which needs to be looked at a different angle where it is a hard problem to solve. Whereas because it's a double edged sword, comes with both ways where you are building equity. At the same time, you have to pay taxes. Uh, I feel like more research needs to go in. Thank you.
And then it's, um, Mortalero.
Jan Moro, District One. Yeah, with the, with the assessments having gone up so significantly, uh, and, uh, it's only taking trimming a little bit off the top, sure doesn't feel like a tax decrease. I think we do everything we can. We shouldn't be increasing our budgets to more money coming in. We should make sure that we are keeping a minimum burden on, on people in Erie. With all the other costs going up, we need to look at every way we can to reduce mill levies and, uh, because we are all assessed at the top of the market. And so our tax went up significantly. So us as a council need to look at every opportunity we can to trim as much as we can off. The state didn't do us any favors by delaying and doing special sessions at the end of, of their terms. Thank you.
So, um, I, I want to provide some clarification. The council didn't actually decrease your taxes twice. We had talked about it last year around this time, but we didn't do anything because there was a special session that was in place at the state cap. So we didn't touch it because the state was going to. What we found out on Tuesday night is because we actually had a decrease in the amount of revenues from the tax, the taxes that are coming into the town, we're only growing our tax revenues for our property taxes by 3%. And you say, how is that possible? My tax rate went up 40% in the assessed value, et cetera. Well, because of the special sessions and because of what they've been doing at the state level, they've addressed it for the residents and it actually makes it so now these communities are going to be receiving less than they initially proposed for the previous year. And our financing was amazingly surprised. Uh, two parts on our taxes. We have the general levy and then we have the ECC PD. We haven't paid for any principal for years on either, uh, the, I think it's ECC or PD.
And then Bell, I believe you're next, District Two.
Thank you, Brian Bell, District Two. I'll clarify what Council Sosh was saying. Uh, it's, it's the police department. Uh, we passed a, a, a general obligation bond in 2014. Those of you who are living here, $6.2 million. We've not paid a single penny in principal on that building. And we're talking about $37 million for an expansion on that police station. The current council and staff have no plan in front of us. There's no new revenues to this. So this, this issue, this is a big issue that needs to be tackled by the next council. It's about being financially responsible. We're talking about lowering taxes. Council Sosh and I initiated when the, when the T-NAC, which is the open space tax, when that got renewed, um, the mayor and staff were pushing for that to go to five mils. We said, no, let's not raise taxes. Let's keep it at four. Uh, that's what went forward. That was approved. We're going to need that extra mill probably to pay for some other things because it's, it's not adding up. Specifically because of what Council Sosh was talking about, that we're not collecting enough property tax revenue to be able to pay for these capital projects.
And then candidate Moro.
Dan Moro, District Two. We all know our taxes have gone up overall and we've also seen the town budget for the last few years where our expenditures have more than doubled. Uh, and that continues to go up. We continue to add FTEs. At the, the budget meeting the other night, several more FTEs were, were proposed. I believe it was seven. Um, we have an FTE to manage our social media. So we pay somebody that posts on Twitter, Instagram, Facebook for us. We don't need that. We need to actually find ways to reduce the expenditures and then look at how we're collecting and why we're collecting taxes. So reducing the mills, reducing, finding ways to partner with the state to get property taxes reduced and actually providing services of value and not spending the money. So we don't need to collect as many taxes. Efficient, frugal and public service oriented.
Ben Hertel, District Two. The, the mill levies, I wasn't a part of any of these, so I don't, not as intimately familiar with them. But the, the mill levies and the taxes are generally going up, in my understanding, due to the assessed value at the county level. Lowering mill levies is a one-way street because of paper, which is generally helpful. But making sure that we have taxable revenue to provide the services to our town. We need roads. We need to be able to move around town how we want. It is important for our property taxes to be used. While the bill levies are available, as we can first buy our tax base using different, as commercial comes in during our growth, we'll be able to manage our mill levies and see what can be reduced as our tax diversifies.
You got it right this time. You're right. You're right on this.
Dan Hoback, District Two. As a person with an accounting and finance background, it's, uh, it's hard to hear these numbers without seeing some sort of documentation or backup of them and thinking of base value or, or simply understanding how they came about. The town of Erie's mill levies are, are quite small as a very small portion of my tax bill. I looked it up, um, and, and most people's, particularly if you're living in a metro district. And given that it's a very small part of our budget and, uh, and they are so low, it's, 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 some of them cannot be lowered. Some of them are tied to the debt that they're associated with and we should be not allowed to lower them. So that's a really small tool, you know, toolbox. Um, so, or I just want to say that our capital projects are very well funded. Our capital projects fund is growing and we're in really good financial shape. Thank you.
District Three, I believe we're the candidate there.
Um, thank you. Emily Bear, District Three. Um, I agree with what candidate Hensel was saying that, you know, we need to make sure that our taxes are able to fund our services. And to add some clarity to what candidate Bell was saying about the T-NAC fund, Mayor Brooks and I both also supported maintaining T-NAC at four mils because we felt like it was important to maintain that fund and maybe not create a tax burden, uh, increase the tax burden for taxpayers. Um, and that's a really important thought. We expanded the definition of it. So, um, I, I, we are all feeling the tax increase this year for certain. You know, our, my mortgage has gone up from our property taxes and insurance. Um, and so I think that it's really important for the town to look at innovative ways to fund important capital projects like expanding the PD. Um, so we have been looking at certificates of participation, C O Ps, um, which are a unique funding structure for government entities to be able to, um, make the expansions that we need. And I think that is really important to be innovative.
Brian McConner, District Three. Um, I think as, I'm going to sound like a broken record. Basically, we all know that, uh, uh, our tax bill has gone up and, but what can we do on a town level to try to, um, try to not increase it for residents anymore is I would want to look better at the budgets and see how we can actually reduce costs, evaluating the full-time employee positions that, uh, have been hired and ones that are projected to be hired, uh, whether, if, whether those positions would be needed or whether we could defer hiring those positions right away. It's, I, um, with, with, um, projects like the police department, I, I would be more in favor of putting that in front of the voters to vote attacks on themselves than to, um, go down the path of certificate of participation. And I'm about out of time, so.
Thank you.
Get into that one.
Okay. We are now moving to our sixth question. And, um, candidate Mortalero, you will be the first one to start this one. And this will be 60 seconds. Yes, yes, you need to know. You have to answer. One minute. What is your best idea to provide more affordable housing in Erie?
So I, I believe we need to work on more affordable housing in Erie. Um, well, I look at, I'm going to compare two examples. The Cheeseman Residence, which is Erie's, in the Willby Corner, uh, which is Lafayette Boulder. Uh, Willby has 400 units versus Cheeseman, which is 35. The taxpayers of Lafayette subsidize Willby Corners $30,000, less than $30,000 per unit versus $90,000 per Cheeseman. Willby Corners is 60 to 80 AMI, uh, average median area median income, where Cheeseman is 120, uh, which 60 to 80 is 70 to 90,000. Uh, 120 has households up to $160,000. The mean income for Erie is 125. So we're subsidizing folks with 30%. We're making 30% more than the mean of Erie. So that's my concern about how we're going to afford the housing.
And then some more questions.
So I feel like I've been saying this for two and a half years now. Really, our housing affordability issue is a lack of diverse housing. It's a housing diversity issue. What we need to do is we need to have it so that our UDC mandates a diverse basis of housing as developments go on. You look at Erie Highlands with Colliers Hill, it's all single family. And now we're finally beginning to see the diverse housing stop. 88% of the town is single family detached. The average median, median household income is 150,000. Um, it's an average sale price of $800,000. It's all single family residences. It's all single family big houses. So we need to work with our development community to bring in different types of stocks required as the development goes on, these different types of stocks. We have lower price points to affect first and foremost.
Affordable housing is something that is very much needed. Uh, we need all of the foster responders and teachers, uh, EMDs and they should live and work in, in Erie. So to provide that, we have multiple options like, uh, you know, increase in density is one way of achieving it. Other is like through grants and having developers provide like different stocks. And I think we should even encourage like reduce so that. And I think we should even encourage like A D Us so that land is limited and increase, you know, options with A D Us so that there is some income generated as well as um uh an additional source of uh residence.
Candidate Malloy.
I am always the first one in this.
Last one it was candidate Bell, just to let you know.
Dan Lloyd for District Two. Um, when it comes to affordable housing, we have a few things to think about. And one of them is where's the money coming from to make it affordable? So we're talking about government solutions, town solutions for it. And then we also talk about unique revenue streams and unique structures of getting that. That's unique ways of taking more money from taxpayers and then using that to fund affordable housing. We already have developers. We already have housing coming in. And what Councilor Sage was saying earlier about making sure the development happens in a more structured manner to get uh some higher density earlier is opposed to later in the neighborhoods, will go a long way towards reducing uh housing costs because instead of building large family homes, then smaller family homes, then town homes, then finding apartments. Uh, mix that up as it goes. That'll help with that problem. And then also making sure that we uh look at what their uh regulations are and how our houses are built. There's a lot of extraneous things that are in there that are going to drive up costs as well as the taxes that we continue to raise and continue to spend.
Are you okay? Go ahead. I guess she just needs to get some water.
Okay. Ben Hensel, District Two. Uh, affordable housing is critical for Erie. As our town grows, we need to make sure that the people who live here can also work here. Um, to make sure that we have uh teachers, first responders, and our service workers can afford to live in town. Uh, one of the options that could be available is evaluating inclusionary housing ordinances and working with our developers. Make sure that the incentives are right to provide this housing uh availability. I I've talked about mixed use before, and that helps with the debt supply while still keeping a small-town feel. Um, we also like open space. Open spaces is not housing. So we need to find a way to keep our open space that we all love and to provide the affordable housing that we need in this town.
Dan Hoback, District Two. There's no argument that that affordable housing uh needs to be addressed. Um, and the unvetted free market is, sorry, is not getting it done. Government needs to step in and help out what we can. And I'm had and I'm happy to have been a part of administration that has helped out with affordable housing policies, um department, manager, and projects. Cheeseman, diligent at at Cold Creek, two senior housing profit projects in process. You know, government's not the solution, but we can give a helping hand, and we need to help build that diversity in housing, um encouraging uh developers to help to to put some skin up to it as well. Thank you.
Brendan Bell, District Two. Uh, this is a very important issue for me. I have two children that are in their early twenties, so I I worry about what they're gonna be able to afford and if they're gonna have the same opportunities that I had when I was their age. Um, what I will say is that the the issues that are being put forth by the town right now are not gonna help. Uh, let's talk about what we call permanently affordable, which is a thirty-year restriction. That is basically holding people in poverty. The biggest advantage to homeownership is the ability to create wealth. Now, they're gonna say, well, you're still creating wealth, it's just at a lower level. No, that's not correct. When you sell your home, it's based on the sales of similar housing products that go out there. Right off the bat, you try to sell one of those properties. You have a limited market to deal with, and and you're just not gonna get the money. The other thing, inclusionary housing ordinances don't work. Look at Denver right now. They have the strongest inclusionary housing ordinance. They've seen building permits plummet, and they're all going to Aurora. If you don't get the building permits, you don't get the income that actually helps you get income. We need to help people directly. There's a better way to do this.
Okay, District Three, I believe it's candidate O'Connor this time.
Um, so in my in my work, I'm in over two hundred homes a year. Uh, many of my uh, many of my clients are they're beyond their highest earning years. Uh, it had me thinking, why aren't we trying to help our seniors age in place? Why aren't we using money that's a three-point-two million that went to Cheeseman? We could have, we could have created a hundred grants for thirty-two, thirty-two thousand dollars apiece and helped a hundred different homeowners change their homes and make it more affordable for them to live in, adding grab bars, walk-in showers. I mean, that money could have gone a long way to help a hundred different households rather than thirty-two or thirty-five households of people who don't currently live in Erie and don't currently pay taxes. I'd like to see these, I'd like to see us look more at helping our current residents age in place and not feel that they're being pushed out because of rising costs. And give you, and I forgot to say my name again, sorry. Uh, Brian, go on.
And I'm Emily Bear for District Three. Um, I agree with Mr. O'Connor. I think it's both and. I think we could absolutely have some subsidies to help our um older population age in place. That's really important. In fact, affordable housing and planning for density and um diversity in housing benefits the the population that benefits the most from that is our sixty-five and up homeowners. It didn't, it enables them to be able to age in place. And I'm not that far off. So I want to make sure we're planning ahead um for this group of folks. Our our sixty-five and up population is set to triple by twenty forty. So it's really important that we are considering this and looking at the different ways. The question is, how can we support affordable housing? There are so many great tools. Um, there's, it all comes down to planning, land use and land use policy on U D C and making sure they're in agreement with our um comp plan and financial subsidies, um land purchase and disposition, um utilizing our grants and funding um from the federal government, which we have been able to do.
Mayor O'Kennedys, I believe it's um candidate Moore.
Andrew Moore, Mayor. Three things. Um, Mayor Brooks and the majority, their um affordable housing on the Cheeseman property. You qualify to make up to a hundred and twenty percent of Boulder's adjusted median income. Who are we trying to help if you make a hundred and twenty percent of Boulder's median income? Second is that we keep adding on costs to the homes here. We now require sprinkler systems and all the cost, which adds anywhere from eleven thousand to twenty thousand. We need to make that an option for the buyers to choose, but not make it forced. Last one. And for stipends for police officers, teachers, anybody that wants to live in Erie, work in Erie, that's doing a community service. And those, I think, would be somewhere around the eighty percent A M I adjusted median income to qualify. Thank you.
The state of Colorado is about two hundred thousand homes short. And it's gonna take a lot of options, a lot of programs in order to make housing affordability actually happen. Uh, the Cheeseman property just is just one example of a partnership where we use federal funds from Parkland to procure the land. Then we applied for a Prop one twenty-three grant and received a million dollars from Dona to help incentivize the program. Then we partnered, we put in an RFP, we partnered with Vertical Development and Alpine Bank to finance the project to make thirty-five affordable homes that will appreciate at five percent per year. That's more equity than they would get if they were able to rent someplace. And it's a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty percent A M I, which you're thinking about people who have children. And if there's a sliding scale of what your uh what your qualification is. So that is just the first project that we've done and the first intentional thing in twenty-five years, frankly, we've ignored it for this entire time. We also have purchased forty acres near uh the the Cold Creek Commons area. It's gonna be right off the creek, half affordable housing. It's not always gonna be the same product. It takes a lot of different approaches to this product.
Okay, thank you all very much. We have one more question, and it will be thirty seconds. And we'll be starting with you, candidate Hensel. And he saw me looking at him, and he went, oh, don't worry. Okay, the last question is one of the two greatest challenges that our town faces, and what do you plan, well, we'll just ask, what do you, what do you view as the two greatest challenges that our town faces? You have thirty seconds to answer that.
Brendan Hill, District Two. Two greatest challenges that the town faces, um I'm a huge proponent of transportation options. So one of the challenges that we face is the the transportation availability and the options that people can uh move around town. The other uh greatest challenge is our affordable housing that we just talked about. So making sure that the affordable housing measures that we work towards throughout uh with the council and with other districts to make sure that affordable housing is.
Okay, candidate Holber.
Thank you. Dan Hoback, District Two. I think to to the greatest challenge the town faces is managing growth in a sustainable, diverse, little, mobile way. That's why I advocate for uh walkability and bikeability and focus on getting around without uh focusing on traffic cars. Second greatest challenge is continuing to grow our economic base and and getting small businesses and supporting small businesses in the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Brendan Bell, District Two. Uh, I would say the the primary concern to me is is being able to maintain a level of safety for our residents as we continue to grow. We've already seen, um, you know, Colorado is now the number three uh crime state in the nation. Uh, we've seen just here uh property crimes go out, vehicle theft, so keeping that safe. The other, the other thing I will say is keeping Erie unique. I think there's a group of candidates up here that want Boulder, that want to keep Erie, Erie, and there there's a group of candidates up here that want Erie to be bolder, visible. I want Erie to be Erie.
Two biggest problems that I see facing Erie are traffic and uh keeping that small-town safe, unique feel that Erie has right now. And the way that I believe that we do that is we ensure that we slow down our growth so that we can actually get the infrastructure to catch up and maintain it since the people that move here and the reasons they moved here still continue to be that, such as being able to get in and out of town. And that we also continue to look at, what is our town doing? How are we ensuring that small-town feel? How are we making sure that our kids feel connected, they feel safe, and they can walk around our town without adult supervision every second of the day?
Okay, candidate Bear.
Thank you. Emily Bear, District Three. Um, I feel like we're all saying the same things with different words. But um I think transportation is an opportunity for us to address traffic corridors. Um, so planning and and being um at those tables that are regional and federal and state fields. Um, and then also uh tra- traffic, I'm sorry, trail connectivity, ensuring that we can move around town and other those of travel other than cars and um maintaining that small-town feel.
Brian O'Connor, District Three. Um, I could restate what the others have said is but I'll add a couple more to it. I think we need to look at um growing our sales tax base, uh bringing in more uh uh commercial and um retail businesses into the town to um increase that base. Another is the um water costs are gonna go up, but we have to maintain the quality of water. And so I think we're gonna be looking at, um, uh, I know the town was already looking at uh yeah, increasing facilities and improving the facilities.
And candidate Brooks.
Justin Brooks running for reelection for mayor. Uh, I would say the rising cost of construction and land have driven the cost of infrastructure projects and open space acquisition to be just more difficult to do. So that's gonna continue to be an issue that we'll have to overcome, and we're finding ways to do that. And I think the second uh, the second thing has less to do with the government and more with the culture that we we seem to promote here. There's a, we are battling a blatant aggressive, a blatant egregious misinformation campaign that's really meant to panic residents and cause them to have a sense of disinformation franchise that they don't participate in governmental processes.
Andrew Moore, uh mayor, I agree with candidate Malloy on traffic and small-town feel, so I won't go through that. I think though that I'll add, open space and trails is highly important. I will be a huge advocate for BURB, which is the Boulder to Erie Rails to Trail uh project. And I'll also add that using C O P certificates of participation to fund the police station is not innovative. It is a higher interest regressive way to fund our capital improvements, and I absolutely would not support them if I'm successful.
Candidate, Mr. Mr. Molly.
I have to agree with all of them, and one of my guys, I was interested in the water and uh clean air is something smart growth, transportation. Yeah, thank you.
John Mordoro, District One. I feel uh one of the top challenges in uh Erie right now is the aggressive growth in the comp plan. The comp plan has planned but not approved, bringing us to a population of seventy-three thousand people with a build-out at eighty thousand. And I believe those are conservative numbers, planned but not approved concerns me. Uh, and also cutting back on spending, uh prioritizing the town hall expansion over the police station, and I don't understand that. I, and I also believe that we should, we should have a say in the expansion. I believe the expansion of the police station needs to happen, but I believe the voters should have a say. Thank you.
And it's almost, you did to be the last person to knock me.
Thank you. You did a great job tonight. Uh, there's a lot that's been said. Um, two things, growth in our town finances. As uh, sorry, Andrew Sawish, uh, Council, District One. We're entitled for sixty-five to seventy-two thousand individuals that are going to be coming to the town. Uh, we are currently about thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand. So we have thirty thousand more that are coming here. We're gonna have strains on our infrastructure. We're gonna have the traffic, small-town charm, all these things that we can talk about that need to be addressed, and we need to have the finances to pay for this. Uh, misinformation is something that was told me when I was saying uh we're, we've been spending too much and our capital fund is gonna be depleted. And lo and behold, staff had to address that on Tuesday nights for our budget, which is now at a good position after these concerns were raised. So it's not just misinformation, it's telling the truth and the whole truth.
Okay, great. Thank you all. I want to thank you very much. In fact, right now, why don't we give them a round of applause? On behalf of the Erie Rotary Club and the League of Women Voters of Boulder County and Vista Ridge Academy, we thank you very much for for participating with us today. Um, I really do want to thank our candidates. It takes a lot to be willing to take a, to take a stand, to give up your hours with your family, to s- to to have have an opinion on issues that perhaps before they became a candidate, they weren't sure that they needed to address. There were a lot of issues that we discussed tonight. There were a lot of issues we were unable to address as well. If you have questions such as on infrastructure, if you have questions on on affordability, on on maintaining green space. If uh if you have questions on short-term rentals, metro districts, there's a lot of different topics that we had down here that I was hoping that we could be able to address. These people up here really do know a lot of stuff that's going on with our, with our government, and I thank you all very much for your research. Um, we obviously have some disagreements, but we also have people willing to work together. This is still a small town. And for you all, thank you for coming out. You're participating in democracy. That's what this is about. Thank you too for being respectful. I also want to encourage you to get active, to get involved. As a member of Rotary, we serve a variety of communities. We like to say that we serve the seniors, we serve the students, and we um serve our communities. So we're actively involved in a variety of different ways. The Chamber is actively involved in in serving, whereas um schools are are engaged in different things. So those of you who don't even have schoolchildren, you could go down and volunteer to be a part of of your schools. We need to come together, and regardless of all the other different issues that can divide us, there's more that needs to be found in common ground to unite us. And so that's the encouragement. We thank you all for coming here tonight. There is an opportunity right now for you to can, to actually be participating in serving our community. We need to put up all these chairs. Okay, and so they can only go like seven, nine high? Is it nine high? Nine high, but they're gonna be coordinating that. If you would be so kind to pick up your chair, and maybe some of you can pick up another chair, and you can take them over there. That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you all. Have a good evening. I do not know the score. I do not know the score, and I hope that the Broncos have a good evening. So thank you.